Do you have the brown on Margaret?
I'm sorry.
Did you have some brown?
No, I'm just saying that there were some people who had texts to be... Well, at the beginning, come back in, there's some people.
Okay, this has already been introduced, I believe, so nothing was decided during the session. We would just advise the attorney. Can I have a roll call vote on my resolution two weeks?
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
And the next of the older resolutions is the authorized transfer of funds for the purchase of the LED radar speed display sign. So their display signs will work at... Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
The next year's resolution authorizes a budget transfer for New York State Reporting and Reporting Services. This, of course, came from Heather. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Margaret and DeWong. Heather, do you enjoy to speak to her quickly?
Sure. Basically, New York State Retirement System is improving their online portal, which is how we have to report all the retirement information, so that people get credited for the right amounts. They are moving to what's called a gold standard, which requires a monthly, I believe, upload of data in specific format. This is to pay our payroll company to create that report, so that we'll be able to meet the New York State Retirement Reporting requirements.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
The next resolution authorizes the creation of a bank to acquire sewer extensions from the New York State Partnership Environmental Complication. I've got an introduction in a second, Brian. DeWong, Anne. Short shot. You might recall, I was asking Rob during the number of our meetings about the problem we were having with the planning for applications before the planning board being approved because there was this issue with sewer extensions throughout the city. Well...
Sorry, Logan, can you pull it up?
Yeah. The long document. What this document does, well, it's been resolved, and the way it works is that this document sets up a bank, and this is how future projects will have to contribute to this bank in order to help solve these issues, is my general understanding.
So we can also, we can also go back to the process of...
Yes. Well, I understand those, yes, and those are being approved now. Basically, this has unclogged a lot of planning board backlog, because they couldn't, they felt they couldn't move ahead until they had this resolved. It has to do with the speeding permit, and it's basically, you know, project and matter demonstrate that they have helped create an unnecessary burden on the sewer system. And there's a way that they have to contribute, and the crap in the original document...
So who's going to keep track of this?
Well...
He will, yeah.
So this, this came from DPW?
Yeah.
Logan, I think you can mute Ronald. He keeps, I don't think he realizes.
The city, I believe, the mayor and the attorneys and Rob...
We unmuted him.
Worked with the DBC on setting up this so-called bank.
I don't really understand how it works, so it's going to let the phone off?
It is, it is hard to understand. Ronald offered to be here, I don't see him here right now. Is it urgent? I don't know.
Maybe we can...
If the stands are only going to vote...
But, yeah, I don't know if the volume can be up or not.
The surgeon, we can always hold... Sorry, it's unclogged, and it might take a little while to unclog it, but... This is not an actual surgeon. Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, Rob sent it over yesterday. So...
So can we hold it to next month, and then like...
I don't see any problem. Do you have a set of problems?
Well, I'm not 100% sure. Basically, what this does is creates an escrow for every project that has to put into money into the cost, so that when there is a connection to the sewer system, if there needs to be extra work done to prevent drainage, that project will pay the cost. And that's the city's way of managing that there is no more sewer issues when it comes to overflow. So basically, each applicant is going to be paying for whatever connection that needs to be done in this resolution order.
So Kamal, are they paying for their specific project, or is everybody putting a certain amount of money into the...
Yes, they're paying for the specific project.
So I don't understand the concept of setting it up as a bank.
No, it's an escrow.
Escrow. Because the entity that's handling this.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's not like a, you know, carbon offset type of thing?
Yeah.
So, and I think if my project is not going to have impact, I'm not going to pay anything. But if my project does have impact, I have to pay the full credit.
I think the money automatically goes into escrow, and at the end of your project, there's no impact, and you're getting...
That's true.
It's probably important for the planning board to have this. I assume, I mean, we can delay it some, but I don't know. Yeah, I can...
Internal figure.
Sorry, version?
I just said that it's probably important for the planning board to have this go through, you know? The particulars, how exactly it's done, and it's only Rob's going to know in the end, you know? I feel...
Let's hold on.
Yeah. Thank you. As a member of the public that's raising, it was SC. Oh, that's Heather.
Hi, yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add a little more exposition, because Rob and I talked about this. So basically, what happens is if an applicant requires additional connections to the existing CSO system over a certain amount, they need to more or less pay for that. The bank is basically when the city on its own goes out and does... So the whole goal of this is to separate ultimately the sewer water from the regular water, and that's something that the state's very, you know, insistent that we do. So when the, when the city goes out and does its own sewer water separation projects, like we did on Front Street and, I believe, Lower Columbia Street, we can take that work, and that turns into credits. So the credits live in a credit bank, so it's not dollar money. It's basically, here's, here's the equivalent of all the work we've done that we get credit for. When a developer comes in, if they need to pay for developmental work, they can buy those credits from the city. So basically, it would be a revenue source. DPW would track that, so it's like, you know, we're going to start with $650,000 worth of credits for the work that we've done in 2019 on Front Street and Lower Columbia, I believe. Somebody comes in, they need X amount of dollars, they buy it from us on a one-to-four ratio that reduces the amount that's left in the bank. The bank would increase every time the city spends its own money, whether it's grant money or not, when, you know, when the city spearheads a project for sewer water separation, that gets added to the bank, and then the developers can buy it. If you get to the point where there's a developer coming in, and there's not enough credits left in the bank to offset, they can buy whatever's left, it's still not enough to offset their costs, they would still have to come out of pocket for the balance of those costs. And whether they did that through the city, or whether they did that through their own, you know, contracting with a, you know, a sewer development organization, construction company, is unclear, but that's sort of how that works.
Thank you, Heather. Nice piece, though.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
Next resolution put forth by the Works Board, which is... Includes... Mr. ... Oh, sorry. It's a resolution to approve, entering to agreement, for contractors to bring the intersection of Third Street and Cherry Alley to ADA compliance. An introduction in a second, please. DeWong, Anne, Margaret, Gary, DeWong, give it quickly.
Yes, thank you. As we reported last month, we focused through our project manager, Crawford and Associates, Third Avenue and Cherry Valley, Cherry Alley, which is the entrance to the youth department. It was also identified by the Department of Justice as a area of concern. Crawford and Associates put an RFP out to about five different contractors. We received responses from three of them, those being Calaruso, Lizzy, and and the ones who we are recommending, which is TJR excavating contractors. We received back the quotes, all of them would be considered competent, experienced, and, but the price, and, and, and we also, one of our criteria was the availability to get the work started. Calaruso came in on, with $69,900. Lizzy came in at $87,000, and TJR came in at $25,000, and they're ready to do it immediately. So the board feels that it was a no-brainer, and we are recommending that the council move forward and, and approve the mayor's ability to enter into a contract to get this work done. And we'll be able to get it started before the end of October, which was a milestone identified by the DOJ. Any questions?
Good job.
It's a Third Street, not Third Avenue.
Third and Cherry.
It's a Third Avenue, but it's Third Street.
Yeah, I still have New York City in my head, so sorry. Third Street, Cherry.
As long as we're not paying for their work.
Or their pricing.
Roll call vote, please. Sorry, so the accounts is the sidewalk repairs account, correct? And that is going to be the account that next year, we're going to put the sidewalk revenue funding. Is there any money that I can chop down?
There is.
Yes.
The treasurer puts side funds, it's $500,000 that began with. We're hoping to split it over two years. So, so far, in accounting, $15,000 went to the project manager. $70,000 was transferred over to DPW, so that they need to begin work to satisfy the DOJ. And that you've seen on the streets up here where they're grinding, where the precision cutting, so they're working on ramps.
Right, but my, from my understanding in the finance meetings, is that $500,000 is, I believe it's 400,000.
It's 400,000, yeah.
But that is revenue that we still have not collected yet.
Exactly, it's going to take two or three years.
Yeah, it'll be coming in the 2026.
Right, so, so what's happening is that next year, we're collecting the tax revenue on the sidewalk tax, which will go against this money, which will produce for this...
Sidewalk fees.
Right, and so, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to take a few years for...
Can I clarify a couple things, please? Heather. A couple things. One is that $70,000 did not come out of the allocation to the sidewalk improvement district. It came out of the general fund and was added to the general fund budget. The second thing, so, so that, those funds are still available in SID. And then just to clarify, there will not be revenue from the sidewalk improvement district in 2025. It will not come in until 2026, because the assessments have not been done yet. So that, right now, the idea is that that $500,000 loan, which has to be paid back from the sidewalk improvement district to the general fund, has to basically get us until we start receiving the revenue in 2026. Just want to clarify those two things.
Thank you, Heather. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye.
Aye.
Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
Next resolution authorizes the sale of city-owned vehicles and equipment. Introduction in a second. DeWong, Margaret, any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
Next resolution authorizes transfers within the public works cemetery and sewer department camps. An introduction in a second, please. Margaret. Any questions? Well, the queen of what team? Do we know what cemetery open or not? No.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
So Tom?
Yes.
I just have a message here, again, reminding about the budget amendment for the American Executive Committee of the Senate. Have you checked on this?
Yeah. Didn't need amendment.
Heather just texted me pictures.
Didn't need, Heather, actually, it's incorrect, didn't need an amendment. Actually, in the resolution.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. So the next resolution is related to the filling law and declaring it a type-two action under CEP. I have an introduction in a second, please. And short shot. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
And the, I was going to say the final resolution, but there's some other resolutions related to laws. This is to accept a deed from the IDA to authorize the mayor to exec, sorry, execute documents to affect the same. I have an introduction in a second, please. Margaret.
Can we pull up this resolution?
Sure. Margaret, I mean, Margaret and DeWong. Questions?
Can you make it larger, love?
Everybody, okay. Questions?
Okay, I just wanted to, I thought that this was where it was.
Yeah, you're okay? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
Okay, now we get to discuss some, I mean, to consider some laws. The first is the filling law. Can I have a motion and second to approve the proposed local law? Margaret and...
Sorry.
So this has been through a process, we all know. And let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, excuse me, Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Thank you.
The next, and for the next local law, which is the, oh, the eviction to the cause, can I have a motion and a second to lay it on the council members' desks? Margaret and DeWong. Okay, the next local law is related to the tow truck operations. I have an introduction in a second. And DeWong. I have a motion and a second to lay it on our desks. Same duty, please. And the next, the next local law. This is amending chapter 325 of the HCC relating to child daycare facilities. I have an introduction in a second. Margaret and DeWong. Then I need a motion to lay it on our desks. Same duty.
I didn't understand this. Can anyone explain?
Yeah, it's pretty simple, actually. And Crystal...
It's pretty simple, myself.
Yeah. I agree, me too. But Crystal will help if we need it. What this does is allow child, right now, they're limited to certain zones in the city. This would simply allow any zone to have a child at your center. By putting in R1, if you're familiar with the code, once you have something in R1, it's pretty much allowed everywhere. Okay?
Yeah. So, but one of the things that I was looking at, led, well... I'll read up on that people.
Yeah. We got that, okay. So, now, we have some resolutions related to the formula retail use law. This may just be the lead agency for that law. I have introductions.
I'm pretty sure these resolutions have to deal with the child daycare amendment.
Local law changes because that's the topic on...
Right, which one? Oh, this, 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 oh, okay. This is, oh, I get.
Yes, yes.
Not going to, this is to the child here, okay, got it all. So this requires us, as we, as we agency in this local, in relation to this law. I have an introduction in a second. DeWong, Margaret, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
Now, also, this law is, we have to refer to the city planning board and the county planning. Can I have an introduction in a second? Margaret? DeWong? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. Dassaloudi, aye. Moranti, aye. Misan, aye. Morris, aye. Fernhagen, aye. Roberts, aye. Roney, aye. Sauer, aye. Bolo, aye. Presley, Pedro, aye. Kerry.
And we have a proposed local law, amending chapter 86 of the HCC relating to brush, grass, and weeds. I've been asked to send this to the conservation by the council, so I think we'll just put it aside for now. We have one more business, but unfortunately, we have to go to executive session again. And this is to discuss. Crystal, how do you describe what we're going to discuss, discussing?
It's discussing pending litigation.
Pending litigation.
Before we do that, since this is the end of the agenda here, is there, I mean, could we, if you don't have any, whatever, can we do that now, so if you come up to leave it and back?
Okay, yeah, that's fine, sure. So we'll go to...
What's the new business?
We'll go to the board. Yeah, we'll come back to that after we discuss holding the business. Council members first. Senator.
I'd like to just remind everybody that's here from the community and everybody on the council that tomorrow, there will be an informational picket at the hospital. Their negotiations are still going on, and it's almost been a year. So we should show them support. If you can't go and picket with them, maybe you want to drop off some water, some snacks, and you should also write to the city.
They haven't mentioned the time.
Yeah, it's 2:30. I'm sorry. 2:30, well, there is a break, it's 2:30. There's a break coming between, so it's 2:30 to 4:30, and then 6:08.
Thank you. Other councilmen? The public? Yes, sir.
I would just like to register my opposition to the ongoing hostilities that are participated by the federal administration, RFP, ongoing, and I wish that they would cease and that we would stop funding that thing of destruction. Something of your outlook to our own conscience is to see where we fall. That's the voice of reason.
Anyone else?
Hi, neighbors, I'm Stephanie Moltzer, First Ward resident. I would like to, and to my neighbors who are online, I would like to recommend that folks who all exactly know what the cause eviction law is really about, should go to the city's website and read a really excellent set of informational points submitted by Robin about that refutes a lot of the arguments that people have against good cause eviction laws, such as it causes landlords to disinvest in their properties, such as that it reduces housing costs. There are many good points to good cause eviction, including keeping our neighbors in place. And for the full informational story, it's right here in black and white. It's been done successfully in a lot of other places. And I urge folks who are against it to learn more and help support equitable housing in Hudson. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would also like to speak in support of good cause. I think it's time for the council, you know, almost passed it before, and in the faith, it was taken down, sort of a change, and then didn't pass again. I think we're at the right time to have this conversation, to not deserve your support on this. They deserve protections, but the state has highlighted it is important, hence why they passed good cause at the state level. And, you know, there are people that are knowledgeable on good cause that you can reach out to, that have reached out to you all, and if you haven't heard from them and you'd like to have a conversation, I encourage you to do that before the next meeting, because it's important. There are constituents that are in support of this and would like to talk to you also. And, yeah, I would just like to encourage you to take difference, because we serve the cause fiction.
I'm here. Yes, sir.
I'm William Galvin, I'm a local attorney that represents many people who are tenants in Hudson, Moltzer, Member of the Democratic Association of America. This afternoon, I... This afternoon, I submitted a letter, but this afternoon I went to the New York State Prediction Dashboard, which highlights eviction violence since, sometimes it's 2019, sometimes a little more recent. So the eviction violence for Hudson, and this is just after the pandemic. Well, it's pretty free to think that 2020, there were 15, 2021, there were 11, 2022, there were 42. So now we're getting after the pandemic. 2023, there were 64. In 2024, so far, with 71% of the year so far, there were 46, which will bring us up to a new high of eviction violence in Hudson only to 65. And as far as warrants of eviction in Hudson and Lurin. In 2021, there were 26. In 2022, there were 29. In 2023, there were 33. In 2024, 39 warrants of eviction issued, which would bring us to the new high in Hudson. 55 warrants of eviction to be issued. So I think that indicates that it's rightfully cause eviction.
Thank you. Anyone? Yes.
Hi, I'm the chief of staff that has injustice for all. It's the statewide coalition that helped pass good cause eviction at the state level last year. And unfortunately, our state legislators decided to force you guys to make this choice for your community. So I'm here to encourage you to choose yes, to choose to protect tenants from price gouging and eviction. I just want to clarify a couple of things that I prefer to come up on prior meetings. Very, very simply, what good cause is, is a defense in housing court. It powers tenants to negotiate with terms of their lease so that they can lower its order of net price and protect against arbitrary or unjust eviction. A lot of times tenants are free to raise issues with repairs because the thing that was their housing. There, there's nothing stopping the landlord from saying, you complain too much about the mold. I don't want you to live here anymore. This is exactly what good cause is designed to prevent. It is a very, very low bar for landlords. If you're a landlord that is, you know, following the law, having, doing regular repairs, raising the rent at a reasonable rate every year, it's not going to change a single thing about how you operate your building. Landlords will still be able to make tenants for a whole host of reasons, including not payment, nuisance, damage. They want to take the unit back for personal use. But what it's designed to do is to prevent predatory landlords, people who make their whole business model off of pushing people out of their homes so that they can rent the units up to higher paying tenants and make more profit. That's what it's designed to intervene, to try to curb the delivery of rent. Price gouging speculation, that's been happening here. And there's no reason to believe that implementing these protections would reduce the supply of rental housing. It won't apply to new construction for the first 30 years. And it will allow landlords to continue to make the reasonable return on their investment. This year, the rent increase that's permissible under the law will be at 8.45. That's a pretty good rate and will definitely allow people to continue to keep up with rising costs. The law also allows landlords to make a case to a judge and say, well, actually, my property rental came in way higher this year. And so I've got a reasonably rent to 15% higher. And the judge could say, yep, that, that makes sense, that's fine. So there's nothing here that is like actually a cap and there's nothing here that prevents continuing to make a profit for landlords. It's just about trying to prevent speculation and rent hikes. It's really like shooting down a mountain you want to be with like 50%, 30% rent hikes and things that are actually forcing people to leave. I'm happy to be a resource and answer any questions in this meeting if we're asked.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Wayne Cross and I'm not so the same as it, as it changes the housing. I'm looking over at Bolo. We both have lived towers together and lifelong residents here. Not many people here, Claire, Justin, most lifelong residents here. But not many of our family members are still able to live here. Not, not our kids, you know, our grandkids. And it's because over years, starting in the 1st street, we were just kicked off because there was no rules. This allows for rules. This is, this allows for us to see our family and know that they can have quality, stable housing. This law allows us to feel like we're still a part of the community that we know and build. Like great bear father voted this city. Most people can't say that, right? The city has changed, a lot of progress. We want ours too. We just want to be able to live in good, safe housing, not be kicked out for anything. We just want to be able to be seen in these moments. See, don't anybody, we walking up down 1st street, you don't see anybody who look like us? Unless you're down the second level. Does that feel good? I don't feel it to me. We want to be able to be here. I want to be able to go up there and say I'm my grandmother's headstone. And not have to drive 40 minutes to that, I have to do it for the most part. I know that there's challenges, but this law, come on, it's the state of New York. They took care of landlords and they took care of tenants. Almost down the middle, we wanted more. We wanted a lot more. All for it. But this is what we had. We came here before and said, let's not do it because there was legal challenges. We didn't want to have the lawsuits, that's what you said to us. We're not waiting for the state to pass it. The state did its job. Now it's time for you to do yours. Thank you.
Anyone else? As you know, we'll be voting on this at our next formal meeting. If that's all of the comments, we are going to go into an executive, can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss? Margaret and Dwan, all those committees, if you'd like to turn it on.
Aye.
You want to vote?
And. Would we end our meeting, right?
Oh, it's Crystal's.
Oh, yes. We just kind of create the meeting.